We will now call to order the Town of Hilton Head Island Design Review Board meeting for Wednesday, January 12, 2022, 1:30 p.m. Teresa, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Thank you. Can you then please call the rule?
Certainly. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Lippert?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Mr. Carsten?
Here.
Mr. Bassett?
Here.
Ms. Foss?
Here. Does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I'm raising my right hand.
Thanks, Annette. Any opposed? Motion passes by a vote of one, two, three, four, five, six. Now we'll move to the approval of the minutes. The meeting of December 14th, has the board had a chance to review those meetings notes?
Yes.
Do you have any changes to the minutes? If there are none, may I have a motion to approve the meetings of December 14th, 2021?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of December 14th, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
My right hand is raised.
Thank you, Annette. Any opposed? Motion passes by a vote of six. Teresa, do we have any appearances by citizens?
Madam Chair, we do not have any appearance by citizens at this time. I will note that there were public comments submitted electronically via the open town hall portal, and those comments were provided to the board and made part of the official record. In addition to submitting comments on the portal, citizens were provided the opportunity to call into the meeting. However, there were no requests to give comments by phone. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Looks like we have no unfinished business. So we can move on to new business, the alteration addition of Lucky Bar and Kitchen DRB-002869-2021. Chris, can you present the case? Oops, we have a question by Mr.
Sorry, Kathy. Yes, Kathy, I'd submitted to Teresa and Chris that I'll have to be recusing myself for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Carsten's. I did see that and I skipped it. Thank you. Okay, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This project proposes enhancements to the old Carrabba's building. These include enhancing the architectural value of the existing building by adding wood siding to the two existing vertical elements at the west porch and north entry. Improve connectivity and visibility from inside by increasing the amount of glazing and doors. And animate the exterior by increasing outdoor dining opportunities and providing activity areas such as a fire pit and gaming opportunities. Staff supports the concept, but the submittal lacks details that are critical to compliance with the design guide. These include, one, a color board clearly keyed to the building. Two, detail of new construction like the knee wall. Three, a landscape plan. Four, tree and/or vegetation protection plan. And five, new pavement plan. For these reasons, staff recommends denial. The site is outlined in red on the screen in front of you. 278 is running from top to bottom or bottom to top on the left-hand side. And you see Follyfield Road running just north of the site. Here are some pictures of the existing building. So these are the vertical elements they comment on and discuss. This is the existing site plan. Existing floor plan. Proposed site plan. So you will note the extension of the outdoor dining areas with some form of pavement here and here. This is the new footprint or building plan, floor plan. And the roof plan as it exists will remain unchanged. And elevations. So the exterior proposed is on the top and the existing is on the bottom. So you can see the vertical siding being added on this element here as well as here. This is existing at the bottom. This is a side. This is the parking lot view of the building. So it's east elevation. This is technically the back of the building. So the parking lot is to your right. And William Hilton Parkway is on the left. So this is the William Hilton Parkway elevation. That area would be extending out here for outdoor dining. Notice the rail and the proposed knee wall here. Sections through the wall. Additional glazing doors. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chris. Is the applicant available?
Hello, everyone. I hope they can hear me okay. Is the audio good? Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. This is a project that is somewhat related to the last.
Excuse me, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Could you please introduce yourself first since we're on recording? That's okay.
My name is David Thompson. I'm the architect for the project with David Thompson Architect out of Charleston. So the project is a renovation of the formerly used as a Carrabba's restaurant. This is for the same ownership as Lucky Rooster. So this will be an expansion of their restaurant portfolio with the concept being higher volume, probably more family-friendly, a little bit more geared towards a broader audience than where the current Rooster is headed. So while this is certainly seasonal, it's also something we're focusing on looking for amenities to add to locals. It's a critical intersection, a very exciting corner, and that's where we're putting a lot of emphasis. We were ready to come before the board pre-holidays and had a conversation with ownership about increasing the scope of work to have more new construction on to the project, which brought in a new layer of landscape needs, much more disturbance to the property than originally anticipated. Additional porches, additional glazing. And so after I went through the DRB meeting for the Lucky Rooster innovations, it was apparent to me the emphasis placed on landscape and the importance that the Town of Hilton Head has for planting design. So we realized that we needed to engage landscape architect and we have engaged Whitmer Jones Kiefer. So they are on board to be working on the project, hence the recusal. That said, we had gone pretty far in our architectural design and wanted to get this in front of you, even if it meant that we didn't have sufficient application for an approval. It felt like a good opportunity while we had time to wait for landscape to come up to speed with us to at least get your feedback before we dive deeper into interior design and the remaining details that were requested. I do apologize for the lack of the colored boards. That is simply oversight because they've actually been done. My clients have seen them. They just got missed in the submittal. We did mail down a sample of the gray weather-washed juniper siding. So hopefully you've had an opportunity to take a look at that. We're excited about the project. I'm very happy to walk you through the drawings if there's any detailed questions. But sort of that's background and context. And I think otherwise fairly self-explanatory on the design end of things. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We'll start discussion with the board with Mr. Bassett.
Let's see, I like the project. You know, I think that the addition of the wood siding is a nice feature. Additional windows, connectivity to the outdoors, all those things seem to make sense. My only concern right now is that it seems like a bit of an incomplete submission. So, you know, I wouldn't be able to vote in favor of approval based on the current submission, but my comments would be, you know, obviously need to see the full color board. I'm most curious about what color the existing stucco will be changed to. The top rail or the top cap at the roof line, you know, has some rust areas. I presume that'll be replaced or repainted or something. So would want to know what color that'll be. Architecturally, would probably defer to Annette or others. Where the vertical siding material, the wood is being added on the on the vertical, you know, kind of towers on the structure right now. You've got stucco that's boxed in with kind of column corners. And it kind of feels to me like it might make sense to have, to retain some kind of corner treatment there. I'm not sure, but I might lean towards something like that instead of just the consistent vertical ship lap type siding wrapping the entire thing. Maybe have it kind of almost framed in, almost like the stucco is currently set up. I think that's really all I had was more curiosity about the colors and then maybe some kind of a corner treatment, or if there is one, you know, what will it be? Will there be some sort of reveal between where the corners are and the, you know, the face of those structures?
Thank you. Mr. Molesky?
Yes, thank you. A couple of quick questions here. I guess when we look at the site plan and the corner of 278 in, what is that, Follyfield there? Is there any, and maybe I missed it as far as how the bike path wraps around there? Are there any? Perfect. Thank you very much for putting that up. Am I missing, is there an opportunity to do something on that corner there for the, some bike parking? Or to make it kind of feel more inviting for folks coming by on the bike path to pull off there? Or is that something that you don't want to do? Or what's the intention there?
It's absolutely an opportunity and it's one we want to take advantage of. So that area in particular, that's sort of primary focus for working with landscape architects to make not only points of connectivity, but welcoming as well as we have talked about bike racks. We've also would like to understand a little bit better where some opportunities are to start to scatter out some loose seating. So it's not so rigid and dining room-like, but we need to better understand what our setbacks are. So they're going to be helping us in that regard, just as much as we'll be working on the parking lot side where the fire pit is. So it's absolutely on our radar as an opportunity.
Okay, so I'm assuming that you're gonna most likely about to put words in anyone's mouth here, but somehow withdraw and then we'll see a new submittal here with landscaping and all the other details that staff is recommending.
I don't know how the logistics of that work out, but it is our intention to come back with a complete set where what you've seen today is supplemented with the complete landscape and civil package. And then any adjustments or additions are provided for the architectural based on the feedback we get today.
Okay, thank you.
So if there's a deferral, you know, I'm not sure how that works for you.
Okay.
John, could I interrupt for just a minute because I think you bring up some really good points. The, your comment about adding bike parking in this area is appropriate. And it, just to clarify, bike parking is allowed in the buffer. So there's a pretty substantial buffer off of William Hilton Parkway and off Follyfield. However, outdoor dining is not permitted in the buffer. So David, that's going to be very critical to understand where that buffer line is and you're going to need to show that on your plans. And the other thing that came up in that discussion, and John, I'm sorry to interrupt again. But yes, just to explain how this process is going to work or make sure we all understand. You don't, you want to avoid getting a denial because you're required, you're not allowed to come back to the DRB after denial for a full year without a substantial change to the project. So we can talk about how that is going to, how that, what a substantial change is. But I understand you want to get comments from the board, but just before it goes to vote, you're going to need to think about withdrawing the project so that it doesn't get a denial. Does that make sense, David?
That does, and that was not clear to me previously. So I appreciate you bringing that up. That would be fairly counterintuitive to our tactics here, trying to save time instead of lose time. So if that, if a withdrawal pre-vote is what's required for us to make this a productive meeting, but also still be able to move forward relatively soon with a resubmittal, then that's what we will do.
Thank you, John. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. I'll pick up the microphone from here. So in regards to the bike rack thing, again, not that I'm the designer or the end-all to the location, but if you have the option between the 278 and Follyfield, I would probably err to the side of keeping the bike racks on Follyfield just from an aesthetic point of view. So we're not jugging up the views from 278 to your, you know, beautiful new elevation there. And also probably from a safety point of view, since there are a lot of families who probably want to, you know, encourage people to stay as far off of 278 as possible for what that's worth. And then my other comment was, if who's ever controlling the screen there, if you would be so kind to put up that elevation that you see when you're on 278 looking at the building. There we go. So, you know, looking at the top picture, we have the nice new signage there, Lucky Beach. And then to the right of that, I guess, I saw in your plan view, you have it labeled as I think activity zone. So there in this elevation, I'm just seeing a big, big blank wall. And again, if this is the elevation that faces 278, I would think there's an opportunity to do something more there. And also just, you know, from your point of view, now again, maybe I'm the one that's at fault here because there could be some beautiful trees right there that in the buffer that I'm not aware of, but since I'm not looking at any landscape plan, I'm not really. All right. So what do we got there? We got, we got a winner there. What's that? Who's that, Chris?
Yes, sir. That's a large, that's a large oak.
Okay. Now, will that need to be limbed up in such a way then to get people underneath it? My fault for not looking at that more closely when I was there, but. That's it.
It's the bottom right picture.
Okay. So I guess between that oak and the building is where the intention is, is to create a, when you say activity zone, is that kind of where you're going to have cornhole or something like that, just to kind of?
That's, that's right. And we also think that's an opportunity for kids to be near the bar without being at the bar, which is why we've given it a hard edge with a gate. So I think that tree is an incredible asset. There may still be an opportunity to look at treatment of that wall. And that doesn't necessarily mean architecturally, but I think we could look at if there's a layer of plantings that want to soften it. It is where our bathrooms are. So we don't have a great opportunity for more openings in the building. But we can certainly look at a way to, you know, find a tasteful way to animate that wall some.
Well, I think that live oak tree probably accomplishes what I was.
Okay, great.
What I was getting at. So thanks. Thanks for sharing that, Chris. Anyway, other than that, I wish you guys success with things. You know, my only other thing I would throw out, and this is probably just a six of one, half a dozen the other, but I'm curious, why running the one by eight vertical versus horizontal? Is it just consistent with this brand's look? Or is this a new pilot restaurant?
Well, this is a standalone unit, so there's, there's no, you know, existing brand identity. It's really much more from an architectural detailing, how skinny the pilasters are left and right of where the large opening is. I don't really like the idea of smaller sections stacked of horizontal siding. Also, to a previous comment, that opens up a whole different level of detailing needed for dealing with the corners and the end grain, which I'm intentionally trying to streamline that corner more. So the vertical just seemed to address those two conditions better than horizontal.
Okay. And I'm sure it's just deceiving in this black and white picture here because when you see the vertical elements kind of in the, in the metal roof and all that, it seems a bit much, but you know, we know that the metal roof's going to be one material and it's not going to look exactly like it does in the elevation. So anyway, thanks for what you shared. I look forward to seeing the colors and the landscaping here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lippert?
Thank you. I want to say in concept, I think the project is fine after having visited the site. I think there are a number of items that I'm sure Judd or Whitmer Jones Kiefer will help you address. I'll just, as far as the biggest concern that I'm seeing is, Chris, maybe if you can go to the Plan A 102. Perfect. Thank you. So Plan South, in that area, there is a pretty significant drop-off on the site and there are two underground propane tanks in that new patio that you're proposing. And the palm tree that is getting a cutout for the side, for the patio, measured to the building facade is about 80 inches. So while it looks like a relatively small trunk there drawn, those are just some pretty items that I think need to be addressed in the next submission is at what elevation is this patio? How are you overcoming this? You know, I'm gauging just visually. It's looking to be in the range of 16 to 24 inch drop coming down that sidewalk from the front door, from the entry door. So, and even on just the parking lot side where that patio is, from the building facade just to that sidewalk, that's a pretty significant drop too. So I think really understanding what's happening there and how you're moving those or what's happening with those underground propane tanks that are, that have projections coming out of the ground there. I'll definitely be looking to you to explain that in the next submission. Much like what, what staff said, we definitely need dimensions to better understand wall sections with more details on them. I also need more information on the downspouts. The current gutters and downspouts are all being taken into the building and draining that way. I couldn't find any downspouts on the elevations and where those are draining to, never mind where the existing downspouts that are, it looked like just about every connection of the existing downspouts is going to have a new roof to it. So how that gets addressed of, of how you're going to meander around those to me are the kind of details that really make the difference between a successful project and a project where on a renovation you ran into unforeseen, even though they're quite visible, let's say it that way, conditions. So I would be looking to get some answers on that for the next submission. Let me see here what other items I had. While I think it's been said generally, we'd like to understand ceiling materials under the canopies, whether there's fans, whether there's lights. Let me just see here, flip through these other pages. Maybe just somewhat more as a side note, understanding that signage is a completely separate submittal. And you'll have to just verify that you're not exceeding the total signage size for the, for the building. But again, it's a completely separate submittal. I'm personally totally fine with the vertical siding. I'm also perfectly fine with not accentuating the corners. I think it gives it a nice verticality, nice clean look. So I'm a, I'm in full support of the, the vertical siding. I would recommend that maybe you look at those brackets under the awning of the front. They look a little undersized to me, both in the front and side view. So I would just recommend that you give that another look as far as how that is. And part of me just keeps looking at that knee wall, which just to me doesn't feel like it's getting tied into the building or the other fence detail enough, whether that, you know, whether you could add a little detail on top that, that picks up on a, on a galvanized rail on the top and it lowers the knee wall a bit or somehow tying the two together because there is a lot going on on this building, I think would be a nice, nice thing to do. That's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Good afternoon. I agree with staff's comments. I have a question for Chris regarding parking. The additional outdoor dining, does that, is there adequate parking on the site to accommodate it?
Yes, to my knowledge there is, but we'll, we will check on that. Staff will.
I am looking forward to seeing the landscape plan. I agree, there's an opportunity to improve connectivity. And I also agree with the bike parking. I would discourage any bike parking on the William Hilton Parkway side of the pathway. But it's a very important intersection on the island and I'm looking forward to seeing the project come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments by our staff. Number one, you did a great project or job in reviewing it, but also by the board members. These are great comments. The vertical elements, I agree with Annette that we don't need those corner stucco trims. The vertical looks very, very nice. John brought up a good point to soften that wall on the 278 side. And the oak tree is big and it hides it, but maybe in a way like you are doing at the Lucky Rooster already exist is doing some climbing vines up that wall just so that it breaks it up from the street level. But also if there are children in their play and they don't have to deal with such a big wall. That's just a, it's not a need, but it would be of interest, I think. Annette, as usual, brought up important things that I didn't see, the gas tanks and the patio level and the lighting and the ceiling conditions under those new things. And Ben, you brought up a good point about adequate parking and John, your parking, bike parking comments were great. I do have a question with regard to the fencing, the one that you've got the rope going through. I work in construction some and we are not allowed to have anything less than a four-inch opening and so that a child's head could not get stuck in there. And I'm wondering if that's going to meet that requirement. But you will work it through with the landscapers, I'm sure.
I will work it through for sure. My understanding is that that would be relative to a guardrail, which this doesn't qualify as, but I'll double check and make sure I'm right in that.
Cool. I think it's a great project. Oh, I also want to address the two comments that were made by people, citizens. There is the address, the 14 Follyfield is on all of Mr. Thompson's documents. So we know where that project is. And this was a restaurant previously, so we're not adding another restaurant. project is. And this was a restaurant previously, so we're not adding another restaurant, even though that's not under our preview, but just to make that comment. And Mr. Thompson, as you've seen, we need a lot more information. As you know, we need a lot from information. So we need to hear from you out loud that you would like to withdraw the project.
Yes, we are very appreciative for the feedback and I would like to withdraw this project prior to a vote so that we have an opportunity to address accordingly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? In that case, we will move on. And we do not need to call any role because the client has withdrawn. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. See you again. We will now move on to board business. Does the board have anything they would like to bring up? If not, Chris, do you have a minor corridor report?
No, Madam Chair, not this time.
This has to be the shortest meeting ever. With all that said, I will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.